Let's call the City of Ocean Shores Library Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Approval of the meeting agenda?
I second it.
Keith, do you have anything for the agenda?
Yes, I do. Sorry, I've got three thousand things going on today.
Just a little.
I was just talking about that.
Yes, we were.
I would like to, I'm sorry, they're cleaning the chairs because they've been out. Plastic chairs, they've been outside all year and they're green. Yeah, so we've got volunteers out there that are going to freshen wash the chairs because Friday's our big topic. I would like to amend the agenda to add an item or a fact sheet piece under new business, please.
Okay. So with that fact sheet. Yes. Okay, so with that amendment, can I have another approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as amendment.
Certainly.
Okay, well, in favor? We have an agenda. Public communication, do we have anyone on Zoom and did you receive anything?
I would not receive any and we do not have any participants on.
Okay, so no public communication. Approval of the minutes.
The line of, oh, sorry. I made a big mistake on it. I left an extra paragraph in there. I'm aware that the celebration for May was not Cinco de Mayo, but May Day. I will come back.
So that, so the little, so that little thing there, Cinco de Mayo, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I actually thought it was Cinco de Mayo because it's my birthday.
Well, then she forgot to put your birthday.
Yeah, I'm saying Denise's birthday. Should we tell her how old?
No, no, don't do that.
Martyrs for everybody.
Whatever the celebration. Okay, any other changes to the minutes? Okay, approval? I forgot to commit. Okay, we have approved the minutes for the Library Board of Trustees meeting on May tenth, twenty twenty-three, as corrected. Keith, the library director's report and we have a lot of show and tell today.
I did. A lot of this in, last night, we said, Michelle and I sat at IGA for two hours at the entrance promoting this, which is the next three months at your library. And we have summer reading, we have adult summer reading, first time, it's been a full-blown summer reading program, we have children's summer reading and we have teens' summer reading. And the theme for all of them is find your voice.
And so, find your voice.
Oh, find your voice. And so the kids are getting a bag with some bookmark and pencil inside. And the bookmark is find your voice. And a pencil that says find your voice. And then they have the little booklet and they read. Get to the page here. They read five books for sixty minutes and then they color in the creature. And there's eight creatures and they get a prize, a really cool prize too, not just junk, but really cool little hot wheel cars and all sorts of fun stuff. And each of Nico's creatures has a voice. So this is really, really cool. And then he embellishes it with some fun things on the back. And then the front page, that's all the kids' programs we're having this summer, two full pages.
Yeah, I think this is amazing.
He does, and he loves it. And we, I wrote a grant and we received three thousand dollars from Save the Children. And so we use Save the Children logo on here. And to accommodate their grant requirements, we have to keep track of how many books or pages the kids read. So they have a sign-up sheet, a registration form, and then they turn that in and I keep track. And when they turn it in, they have a little parrot, find your voice, they put your name on it and it goes on the bulletin board. Oh, cool. And they're all different colored parrots in here. So that's the kid. We had a couple little girls like yay hi yesterday, I want this, I want this, take it off the table. I want it, I want it. And then for the teen, we have the, they need return, repeat bag on Zoom. And she has a bookmark in it and it's a different one, it's a whale, find your voice. And a smarty candy because she thinks they're pretty thirst hard. And then they read and turn in a form and then they get a prize. And on August eleventh, they have a finale party where they're entered into drawing for prizes. And they, Michelle has received twenty-three hundred dollars from local businesses and prizes to date, and she still has three more coming. Twenty-three hundred dollars, they're fabulous, they're things you can hardly love. Just wonderful. So and then she lists all the businesses on the flyer that have given us stuff. And they know we're coming and they are just so generous. And then she has one big program besides the finale party and it's going to be in July and it's a murder mystery night. And remember, all of this is funded by the Friends of the Library. Not one penny comes out of the library, but and then we have the adult. And the adult is doing a bingo card. So they sign up and they get this bag and they get their bingo card. And they can either read across or down or fill up the whole thing. And after they do whatever, they can do one card, they turn it in by the beginning of August and they're going to get five dollars in book bucks for this room or for the book sale where they can use five dollars to get books. And then their card will go into a drawing for four twenty-five dollar Amazon gift card. And if they do a blackout, they call it, I've never done bingo, but if they do the whole thing, they enter a drawing for a fifty dollar Amazon gift card. And then they can list on the back what they've done. And it's things like read a book of poetry. Read Christmas in July. Attend a library summer reading event. Check out a cookbook and cook something. So just fun stuff like that. And then this is the little bag the adults get. And they have a poem in here. And somebody heard me read this at the Friends meeting, but it's find your voice and it's I've got a voice to speak my mind, to spread ideas, to choose to be kind. I've got a voice to create something new, to tell a story, to share my point of view. I've got a voice to paint a scene, build a bridge, or to keep my world clean. I've got a voice to lead a crowd, play a game, or sing out loud. So they get this poem in their find a voice bag along with their flyer. And on this page, those are all the adult programs for this summer. Seventh in July, fourth in June, and fourth in August. And some are for all ages, some are for teens and adults, some have registration. Anyway, it's all on the flyer. Yesterday, we set up the table out there, it'll be set up permanently, we are now starting to register everybody. And to go along with the kids, because, you know, I'm such a straight-laced librarian. I had to do this. I could do find your voice. So each adult is giving a kuzu as well as a candy.
So sign up for that today?
Yes, you may. And to kick this all up. And these flyers are for you to take and take all over town. I would like you to give them to at least five people. Just spread the word. We're having an ice cream social, free ice cream Friday from one to four, one to four.
This Friday?
This Friday. You know, it doesn't say that one. Anyway, Friends are providing IGA ice cream, IGA is donating the ice cream. And as a zillion toppings, Mary Jo's just going crazy. And then at two o'clock is going to be the kickoff for the kids' summer reading program with magician Jeff Evans, but it's really family oriented. And then we're having a Quinot storyteller Harvest Moon, who a lot of people know, and I guess she's quite good at storytelling. And it's a family program as well, and that's going to be at three.
I'm coming to that, that sounds really interesting.
I heard she is. We were at the store and some guy walked by and goes, oh, I know Harvest Moon. She's wonderful, you're really going to like that, you know, so I thought that was good. So Jeff's at two, Harvest Moon is at three. So come have some free ice cream, pick up some flyers and let me see if I have anything else. The Friends are having a book sale, which whoever's reporting on the Friends, are you doing that, Alex? You can talk. Okay, you can tell them. Oh, I have to tell you, the June flyer is up here as well and has everything on it. The other programs for the kids for June besides Jeff are Leaping Louie, which is a Western comedy show with rope tying. And then Professor Finkelstein, who's one of my favorite people, he's just fabulous. And then we always have our DVD collection. Oh, Nick's doing an Android phone basics and he's got seven people already signed up for that.
Am I, even though you have to sign up, I want to do that.
Do that because we only have, we have twelve spots, but yeah. That's next Wednesday, first day of summer at nine thirty. And he's got programs lined up for computer classes for every month, so they're, they're pretty well received. Nico's doing a different program this summer called Art Sparks. And we're not doing the extravaganza, we're going to save that for the school year. And it's basically take watercolors and create abstract animal art and do your own thing. So for elementary age kids. Dungeons and Dragons, we've been in it a month now, it's going fabulous. Twenty, twenty-five people each Friday night out here, all ages, ten and up. But it's been, it's been really, really good. And again, all of the support materials, all, everything you see, ink cartridges, the Friends of the Library are funding this whole thing. And then whenever I do my talks each month, I have to do the DVD talks. This is written by a wonderful volunteer for me. The theme, this month's DVDs that we have on display in the section is outer space. We have fifty-seven titles from nineteen fifty to twenty nineteen. We have two series titles called Star Trek Discovery and Firefly. And here's your three questions, are you ready? All right, movie person.
Not my genre.
What phrase, what phrase, sorry, is used to wish a Jedi good fortune?
May the force be with you.
What phrase does the Vulcan use to wish good fortune?
With well and prosperity.
Yep. And she wrote down, she wrote on my, she, bonus points if they can do the hand gesture that goes with it. Okay, last one, what film is this quote from? Who said it and what did Dave want? I'm sorry, Dave. I don't have deep enough words.
Two thousand and one.
Open the pod, open the pod door.
And Steve, yep. How nine thousand is refusing to open the pod doors to let Dave get back into the show? Isn't that fun? I look forward to everything, every month.
So great.
You gotta have that perfect.
That's all, man.
That's all? I don't know, you're slipping, you're slipping.
Yeah, a tremendous amount of work, Keith, thank you to you and all of the staff. I mean, it really is just pulling it all together, not just the programs, but then all of the materials that go with it.
Yep, we start, we start the summer reading at beginning of February. Yeah, I make them start thinking about it. We actually changed themes this year. We usually go with a national theme that a lot of public libraries use and it was just not workable. And so we went with another company's theme and the find your voice and we're loving it, it just fits perfect. So yeah, take a gander at our table out there, it turned out really cute. And the bulletin board for the adults. It's good, Louise did that and it's just adorable, has bingo card on. And then I also, I'm sorry, I was done, man. The umbrellas for the pavilion are installed and ready to rock and roll on Friday. So who might want to take a walk out there after the meeting?
Okay, Keith, anything on the statistics that you want to call attention to? You gave us the May statistics.
I know it is eons ago, yes, nothing, no, we're cruising right along. I still am very excited that our door counts are creeping up and we're getting back to pre-COVID where I can see thirty people an hour coming through the door. This time we had door count, we had
It's up to twenty-six.
Yeah.
So the door counter is working again.
Yeah, we finally did.
Oh, okay, that was going to be one of my questions.
Yeah, no. That's why, but they could not get me April's back to fill in. So April is unknown. So, but yeah, twenty-six, so yeah, it's creeping up. Thirty was what we did consistently before COVID. And you think of those little doors in a little space and thirty people in an hour, that's a lot, that's a classroom.
Yeah.
Kids, you know, so.
Especially since Timberline is thinking of closing the Amanda Park library.
They are closing.
Oh, they are.
They're going to physically move it and take it away.
Let's do that. There's going to be a color balloon about it.
Yeah.
I'm so glad that we have the library local.
I hope we never go into the tent.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, having had to close a library, it's, you know, very difficult when you look at the taxpayers across the all the counties that they serve and trying to justify serving the
Well, I think the problem with Amanda Park, there's nothing in Amanda Park except that library and that should have been taken into consideration, I would think.
I mean, it's such a sad little immunity resource.
Not so that I could take them and put them out on the table at council?
Yes, you can.
Because there, that's like a time that everybody's grandkids come at meetings and that'd probably be a lot of useful information.
You can take all these handouts because I can grab one. Okay. Yep, I would love it. Thank you. Yes, we need, we need to get the word out.
If I can toot my own horn for just a second. I have the exhibit out there about the Upper June Trail. And it just happened that the Upper June Trail is going to be opening this Friday, well, opening, but
Ribbon playing.
Ribbon cutting, so.
Yeah, if you can make it. Dial it at one o'clock.
Today?
Friday.
Oh, Friday.
They're having, that's, it's going to be a huge event.
Everything's happening on Friday.
Yeah, I know.
See, that's when the screen starts.
You can go over there, participate in that because that's real important and it's real special. It's taken years to get this.
Yeah.
And John and company have made it happen. And so support that and then come for ice cream and the programs.
Okay. Nice.
Good work. Yes, Alex, sorry.
It's the trail that's exciting.
And also, not that this has anything to do with the library, but the Vietnam Veterans Wall is starting this week over at the casino, which I'm really anxious to have a look at.
Eleven o'clock today, they should be driving down.
Oh, they're, oh, they are today? Before they take it to over to
They're going to go here and then down that first road that goes over to the Boulevard.
Oh.
And then back around, but I just said, yeah. And round eleven.
Oh, round eleven.
Yeah, which should be, we're getting out, pretty sure. Yeah, you'll be able to hear them from what I was told. So coming like in motorcycles and all sorts. Yeah, I'm hoping to catch a glance.
I went and saw it the last time, it was there, it's really moving.
Yeah.
It's amazing, it's amazing thing. Okay, any other questions for Keith and the director's report? Okay, onto old business, Susan, we have you down for June twenty-sixth, we have the city council. And we are looking for someone for July twenty-fourth. I can do it. Okay, thank you, Susan. Okay, under new business, we have added agenda item.
Right, I wanted to have Susan mention something that we talked about on the phone to all of you, you want to go ahead and mention?
Oh, is this about the fact sheet, Keith?
No, it's about the statistics.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's, I was, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that when we did the thing. Just maybe starting some quarterly reports maybe from Keith about the, now that the strat plan is all in place and everything like that, it would be nice for the board to get quarterly reports about finances, just, you know, where all the budget is going, little check-ins on the budget every quarter. I guess she used to do that before COVID hit and, and now that the strat plan is all taken care of, I thought it would be a nice thing to do.
Sounds like that I did.
You know.
Give you an idea.
Keith did used to do that before the COVID.
So I think it's a good idea to bring.
Yeah, I'll give you a quarterly and reflect on the strat plan and where we are financially. I can tell you right now that we are exactly to the tenth, ten, two percent under where if I spent the exact same amount of money to spend the money for the whole two years, we would be, so we're two percent under. And I do that on purpose because window breaks, something happens, you just never know, I like that cushion until the middle of the second year. And then I spend it, but yeah, I keep it in there, so exactly two percent. And I'll have something for you, I don't know which maybe I'll talk about. Yeah, be glad to do that.
That would be great.
Thank you.
And before we move on to our reports, I still have another item under, under new business.
Oh, okay.
It's come to my attention that it's time for the library to step up, promote, advocate what we do in this town. And I would like the Library Board to stand behind a fact sheet, an information sheet on kind of focusing on why the library should stay in the general fund. And I'm hoping that Denise and Susan would work with me on that.
Sure.
And get it started and, and then that the rest of you will help distribute, promote, advocate that piece. What do you think?
Well, I feel like I'm already doing that, but amongst the groups that I belong to, I'm always pushing the library and helping to have it. So I'm more than happy to continue doing that for sure.
Okay, thank you. And, and that is, if you look at the responsibilities of the board, that is part of our responsibilities is to advocate for the library.
Yeah, and then we'll have a fact sheet to go with it.
Yeah.
Right, it'd be nice to have something to just hang down. This is how, this is how it's funded, this is all the the good you do.
Services.
Everything, the general.
And the impact to the number of patrons, I think that's something that's, if people don't understand how many people use the library.
Yeah, you'll notice the meeting room use statistics of the number of meetings in here is staying consistently in the high seventies, low eighties. Consistently.
It probably can't go much higher than that, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to get in this room, I tell you, it's pretty well booked constantly.
Yeah, I hate people.
So Susan and Denise, could you talk to me a bit after our board meeting? Thank you and thanks for doing that.
Sure.
That's all I have, Denise.
All right. Okay, Allison, I'm not sure if you're listening now or if you've had some interruptions. Are there any questions that you have for us or anything you'd like to add?
I, I love all the programs you're doing this summer, Keith, that is going to be amazing for the kids and the adults. So some great stuff planned. And I and I like the idea you're going to have the fact sheet because I'm always talking about the library and I know there's talk about the library again. And so I like the fact that we'll have those fact sheets because I'd like some of those that we can have the information to give to people because they really do need to know how many people are impacted by that library and it is the majority of the community.
Yeah, yes, yes. Okay, well, we will certainly keep you informed. Thank you, Allison, thank you. And thank you for your support and your attendance. Friends at the library. Alex.
So just seeing what a friend of the library has been supporting, which is quite a lot. The only thing that I think I could add is that the book sale was very successful and it was so successful, in fact, that they're planning another book sale on July third and fourth.
Oh, that's timing. That's great.
Yeah, that's really good. And it's had to go on good stuff. I think the ice cream event is going to be particularly delicious and I think we need more ice cream socials.
We're having a hot dog social. And we're having a watermelon social, hot dog is in July. Watermelon is in August.
Okay.
And I've heard, I'm not sure, Nico might be doing a seed spinning. But I'm not sure, is it going to help me on that, but yeah, it's coming. This all sparked after Santa was such a success in December. The Friends, like three of them just said, we've got to do more of this, we've got to do more of this. And so we came up with a calendar of events.
And the last time the Friends had hot dogs, you, they were the best hot dogs.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree.
And they're US Foods hot dogs and we found an access point to get those, so. Really good. And it's very nice because different people in the Friends are stepping up to kind of be in charge and get volunteers for that event. And I understand for Friday's Ice Cream Social, we have new members that haven't participated in the Friends are coming to help with the event, which just tickles me to no end.
Yeah.
So we're getting new people in. So, yeah, they have over a hundred members.
Well, that's it for my report. Okay, Library Foundation, we met on May twenty-fourth. And I think the, we went over, the, the foundation members are still actively looking for grants. As Keith mentioned, the Sunshade project is complete. Everything is installed, so go ahead and you take a look. It was a substantial contribution by the foundation to do that. We had, for a very short period of time, we had the seven members that we had been increased to from five. And one of them has had to resign. She had a change in her work schedule and is simply unable to attend the meeting. So we do have one opening on the foundation, have you filled that yet?
I have no evidence at this point in time.
Okay, so again, if you do know someone who would like to help with the Library Foundation, they fund, while the Friends funds these projects, the foundation funds the amazing big projects like this meeting room and the expansion as well as the shades out there.
The next project that they're toying, that they haven't quite adopted yet, is to put a reader board and a lit sign in our parkway. And I have two bids on it and so we're possibly, I want it to look like C-Mark. You know, something that just stands out. So if you don't turn your head and see that it says library on the building, you know there's a library there.
Yeah.
So, but they're not a hundred percent sure on that yet, they're working on it, but that's maybe coming.
So I think that's about it. We're looking for an additional member and officer elections will be in July. Next month, we have John listed, I don't know if he's still going to come to the foundation.
I think he is, as of right now, it's on his calendar.
Okay. And then and then we have Miles, our broker, I mean, the following. So I think that's about it for the foundation, do you have anything else to add?
No, it's, it's so wonderful to work with two five oh one C threes that are doing and accomplishing and positive work.
Yeah, and the new members of the foundation really do have a lot of energy, so it's, it's wonderful to see that transition and bringing new people in, like Keith said, we're bringing new people into the Friends and having new people on the foundation, the more advocates we have for the library and the more we have willing to raise money for the library to provide those extra things that we couldn't do otherwise.
Who are the members currently?
As a matter of fact, I moved them down, so. Stacy Steele is vice president. Kathy Baker is secretary. Vicky Cummings, one of the newer members, has agreed to take on treasurer because the former treasurer has moved out of Ocean Shores, she was able to get a, another job, so she moved out of Ocean Shores. Lynn Ervina, Vicky Lanciano and Linda Rust. Actually, those are current members.
Thank you.
And Perry Stern, she was the attorney who was on for a short period of time, who could not make the meetings.
Thank you. So Stacy's the president, right?
She's the vice president. She's the vice president right, right now.
Just acting.
Yeah, right now she is acting. Okay, um, the board public comment to the council. Um, thank you so much, Sarah, for giving us more than three minutes, because I took about five minutes to go through partially what Keith did. Uh, I covered the June programs. And I said, Susan, that you would be hearing more about July. Um, so basically, I, I covered the, you know, fundamentals that we did have, like pretty summer reading programs. And then mostly I went into the, the details of what we are, uh, were having, you know, this, this month. And, uh, it was the longest I ever gave. It was about five minutes. But, uh, it was, you know, impossible to get it in, all of the things going on in the library. Just the, the basic overview of it, which is a wonderful, wonderful problem to have, Keith.
Susan, you can probably plan on ten.
Point July. I don't know how to do that.
Say, I'm talking for five minutes.
Yeah, but it is, you know, I think it's important for them to hear over and, and over all of the things the library is, is doing. You know, including that we're having three programs to hit all ages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, what's, how's, how's... It's coming.
Is it?
Yeah, we're almost ready to launch.
Really?
We changed, we changed some of the major things. They fired some people. They hired some new people. It's been a circus.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, it's just about there.
Okay, good. I'm so excited.
Yeah, we've got it. Um, I have to test some stuff. I'm gonna have Nick work with me and walk through it, because...
Do you think I'll be able to say anything about it?
Uh, we're planning a huge, um, push-off in September.
September, that's, that's...
Because I wanna, I wanna run and kind of drive, run further and see how it goes. See if the monies I allocated are real. You know, it's very complicated.
Yeah.
And it's complicated on my end with the business part of it, the money part of it.
Right.
So, but yeah, it's coming. So Nick, for his, um, computer class in September, is gonna highlight it. And so we thought we'd do your piece. Summer reading will be over. It's something fun and the ball, what about? Oh, I forgot to tell you. Sorry. Anyway, Canopy's, Canopy's coming, so yeah.
Plus tied up with school, back-to-school stuff.
Right, so yeah, so for September, virtual reality. The Friends, that, those little, I know nothing, believe me, I know nothing. There's those little things you, Denise has done it, and you put it on your head, and then you get carsick because you're flying airplanes and everything. The Friends gave the library forty-five-hundred dollars to buy the equipment, which is quite pricey.
Yeah.
And to run a monthly program for virtual reality, and we're gonna hit all ages. But as I was telling them, and that's gonna start in September as well, because I, I'm looking for September booms. Um, the other thing we're gonna have in September that's gonna be a boom is an author fair, which is gonna be huge. So September, we're not slowing down, folks. Yeah, I've got a staff like this of people that are local authors that are gonna come. So we'll have Canopy, we'll have the author fair, and we'll have virtual reality. And I came back and told Nick yesterday morning, I said, "They, they kind of..." He gave me this really wonderful proposal, and he had the gold, the silver, and the, "Oh, do I really want it?" And they went for the gold and gave him forty-five-hundred dollars. And they also said, "If you wanna add another forty-five-hundred, if it's popular, they'll do that." And one of the, um, visions that I mentioned to them, that somebody told me, because I've never done it, they said, "They can't walk on the beach anymore." It was a senior citizen. And he said, "I got to walk on the beach in the sand again." And that, I mean, that to me just pulls your heartstrings.
Yeah, right, right.
And, you know, other things, you know.
Yeah, well, and then disabled too, that's really...
Right. And then, you know, even things for teens, but it's not all teens, you know, game programs. It, and we're gonna kind of focus it. Um, the mayor also has a senior outreach initiative going on, and we're hoping to tie it into that somewhere down the road. So, so that's in September as well. I'm really excited about it. And Nick was just like, "Oh, good." Yeah, my grandsons have it. So for the, the faint of part like me who actually don't want an ice pick, I climbed Everest. Wow. And you really do get that sensation.
Yeah.
You know, looking down and, uh, yeah, it, it's, it's freaky. It really is freaky. So, uh... Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay, our upcoming meeting is July twelfth, uh, ten a.m. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.